I must have been bad. All of the UCP heads.
Thank you, boys.
Yeah, right. What did I do wrong? I got five things from UCP heads. There's Kathy. We've got no public comments. You get there in order now. Soon as Mark gets here, we'll start. That's what they gave us Saturday. Two weeks. Yeah, the middle of June. Good evening. We'll begin the Union County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Monday, June the 3rd, 2019. And as usual, we'll open with our invocation. And our invocation will be given by Vice Chairman Dennis Ray.
Okay, before we pray, I don't know why, but I've been kind of somber the last few days. Several people have said, "What's wrong?" And I don't think nothing's wrong. So I got up this morning and started reading, and I found an old story. I wish I could claim it, but it, I thought it was very appropriate. Little young boy was eating biscuits at the supper table, and he said, "Mama, these are the best biscuits. What's in them?" She said, "Buttermilk, lard, and flour." And when he, she overheard him that night saying his prayer, he said, "Lord, I hate buttermilk. I hate lard. I hate flour, but I love biscuits." And I thought about it, and now if I would ask you if you would bow your head, I'll go into the prayer. Our Father, we ask your guidance on us because as public servants, that's basically what we try to do, is take things that are not really good by theirself, but we try to make them good for our citizens of Union County. We try to equip our law enforcement and our fire and safety people with what they need. We try to educate our children with what we can and what they need. And we try to provide a good standard of life to as many citizens as possible. We ask for wisdom tonight as we sit before our citizens and make these decisions. And as in all things, we ask that you give us your divine wisdom in all decisions we make. Amen.
Stand. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is Tyson Foods Project Max. This is an item for a public hearing on a proposed economic development incentive grant for Tyson Foods Project Max. I will open the public hearing and Ron Mail, that's good, Assistant Director of the Monroe Union County Economic Development will present this item.
Thank you, Chairman Helms, Commissioners, Manager Watson. It's my pleasure to bring before you tonight an economic development incentive grant request by Tyson Foods, otherwise referred to as Project Max. Tyson Foods headquartered in Springdale, Arkansas, is a world leader in the production of top-quality food products. Tyson has operated a fresh tray-packed chicken facility in Union County since 1989. They currently employ 1,850 people at this Monroe plant. Tyson began conversations with our office last month about the potential investment of $9 million of automation equipment that will enable the company to greatly increase the capacity of its chicken breast fillet and chicken tenders in order to satisfy growing demand for these products. The new equipment will not only increase productivity, it will also enable many current employees to cross-train to less physically demanding roles, which will overall, which overall will support the long-term sustainability of the Tyson facility in Union County. The company is considering a $9 million investment. If Monroe was the selected location, equipment would be installed and operational by late, uh, late 2019 of this year. The company has indicated that incentives are a very important factor for the project in the company. Then the project is in competition with other corporate locations in the United States. Tonight, we are requesting your consideration of a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed $207,000, to be paid over five years, beginning in fiscal year 2022, based upon the Union County Tax Office's appraised value each year on the company's anticipated investment of $9 million. Based on this investment and holding all other factors constant, including depreciation, the company would pay estimated ad valorem taxes on the new taxable investment of $328,905 over the same grant period. Of course, actual tax revenue to the county will be based on the current tax rate applied to the assessed value of the investment each year after depreciation. We presented this project to the Monroe Union County Economic Development Board of Advisors at their May 21st meeting, where they unanimously supported us bringing this project for your consideration tonight. As we do with all of our projects, we performed a cost-benefit analysis, and this project shows a 1.72 to 1 return over the first five years for the grant period. And that increases to a 1.82 to 1 return over the life of the project. We will also bring the project to the Monroe City Council tomorrow evening for their consideration of a similar economic development grant. Therefore, the Monroe Union County Economic Development Board of Advisors and staff recommend the award of this Step Two Performance-Based Incentive Grant to Tyson Foods in an amount not to exceed $207,000 in order to help secure this $9 million investment. At this point, I'd like to recognize Mr. Jonathan Edwards, who is Complex Manager with Tyson Foods, who's available to answer any questions should you have them. Thank you.
Are there any questions? I don't believe we have any questions, but we appreciate your participation in our county. You're a valuable asset to this Union County. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We've had no one sign up for, for speaking, so we will close the public hearing on Tyson's Foods. Next item is item number four. This is a public hearing on the FY 2020 Proposed Operating and Capital Budget. I will open the public hearing and ask Blake Hart, Director of Budget Management, to make a presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager Watson. It's my pleasure to be here with you today to talk, to talk about the highlights of the County Manager recommended FY 2020 Union County budget. We met a few weeks ago to talk, to do the original proposal, and I'm going to go over the highlights and the core values today to do, do a brief overview for folks as they make comments. This, this annual budget was built on three core, on three strategic core values. Those are maintaining fiscal discipline, investing in our core services, implementing a strategic framework for internal and business processes. We are very fortunate that we live in, in Union County, an area that has such a robust and growing economy. We're a community of choice. We are a community that continues to grow as people move into the Charlotte region, continue to move to Union County for all the benefits that we have here in, in the county. And I'm one of those folks who moved in because it's a great place to be. This results in 3.6% property growth, property tax base, property tax-based growth. This, the County Manager's budget is proposed to decrease in total dollar in the general fund by 3.4% or 5.98, or just about $6 million. That number also includes the, the funding in FY 20 for the Economic Development Industrial Park, which is about $2.1 million. If you exclude that from the general fund, there's a total decrease of 4.6% or $8 million. The tax rate transfer from the general government fund to the voter-approved debt fund of 2.1 cents is in place to provide funding for voter-approved debt. We know that there was some, there was some building projects that went to the, the community this year for the law enforcement facilities expansion and renovation and the emergency services complex. And so the associated debt service with those projects will be funded through that 0.21 cents that'll come out of the general fund and go into the voter-approved debt fund. The, the county is becoming less dependent on one-time revenue sources or allocated fund balance. The, there's a, there will be a decrease in allocated fund balance in the annual budget of $5.88 million. That's a decrease from FY 19, from about $8.5 million in the adopted budget to about $2.6 million in the FY 2020 proposed budget. All of this is accomplished by maintaining the countywide tax rate of 73.09 cents, by investing in our core services. The County Manager is recommending a tax rate swap from EMS to the Countywide Fire Service Fund of .3 of a penny, .3 cents of a penny. This will be done also, but we'll fully fund EMS's request, and that will provide funding, $1.56 million, that will help fund $1.56 million for one-time funding of equipment purchases for fire departments. The, we all, we know that public safety is a high priority in Union County, and it continues to be that. And the, the County Manager reflects that priority by increasing the Sheriff's Office budget by $1.43 million in FY 20 also. To implement a strategic framework for internal business processes, there are three key components. One is capital investment, the other is investing in employees, and the other is investing in education. The County Manager's recommended budget includes funding for operational capital in the amount of $550,000. This, these are for smaller projects that are below $100,000 in, in cost. For facilities replacement and renewal, the County Manager is recommending $1.2 million. And those are projects between $100,000 and $300,000, kind of the mid-sized projects. And recommended funding for major capital from the general fund in the amount of $2.55 million for a total general fund transfer to Pago or to capital funding of $4.3 million. This, this budget includes a 3% merit pool for employees for paper performance. No increases to health, to employee health costs in this year's budget are recommended. And this budget also absorbed a 1.2% increase that was mandated by the state for elders or the, this, the employee, the local government employees retirement system. And that was about $650,000. This recommended budget also includes fully funding SPCC and, and Union County Public School System for their operating and capital request. These are the major highlights for the recommended or the proposed FY 2020 County Manager's budget for Union County. And all of these things are being recommended with, with, by maintaining the, the current tax rate of 73.09 cents. I want to remind folks at home or folks that are here in the audience that obviously today, we're at the public hearing on June 3rd. We have a budget workshop scheduled for June 10th, and we're working towards adoption of the, the budget on June 17th. All of our documents or our presentations can be found on our county website, the, under the Budget Management section, and we can be followed through the budget process on social media. And that's all I have to share with you today. Unless you have any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Any questions? I will want to note that the tax rate's staying flat. That also includes fire taxes and fees flat as well to consumers, right?
That's correct.
Yep. Okay.
All right.
We have had one person sign up, Brad Hargit, if you want to come share your thoughts.
Good afternoon. I'm Brad Hargit, and I live at 2811 Fowler Secres Road, which is in Union County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight in support of the proposed Union County Recreational Complex. I've been fortunate enough to be involved in some of the planning meetings due to my serving on the Ag Advisory Board and the Union County Farm Bureau Board of Directors. This project will provide many benefits to our county and our strong agriculture industry, which generates approximately $492 million in cash or seats annually. Multiple organizations, such as the Cattlemen's Association, will have many uses for the new facility. Annual livestock events, such as a performance-tested bull sale and the Cattlemen's Association Replacement Female Sale, bring in many buyers from across the southeast in search of quality animals to put into production on their operations. Breed-specific associations, such as Angus, Sematol, and Santa Gertrudas breeders, would use this campus for annual shows and sales. These events will allow this facility to be showcased a thousand yearly and prove the commitment our county has to support its producers and our ag industry. In valuable education programs provided by Cooperative Extension, we use this facility for classroom and hands-on training exercises. Pesticide training programs will have classes inside and have hands-on training in the arena with operations of equipment and calibration. Horticulture and food production will have class space and planting, pruning, and harvest demonstration exercises in the arena. Trade shows could be in place highlighting new equipment and plant breeding technology that will provide the information producers need to remain competitive in an ever-changing industry. These are only a few examples of the endless possibilities this facility will provide to further strengthen the agriculture industry in our prosperous county. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and speak in support of this. And I look forward to working with the diverse interest groups also supporting this project for the benefit of our great county as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With no other speakers, we will close the public hearing on the capital budget. Next item is item number five. This is a public hearing for the rezoning CZ 2018-010. CZ 2018-010 Courtyards on Lawyer's Road. I will open the public hearing, and Lee Jensen, Senior Planner, will present the rezoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is CZ 2018-010 Courtyards at Lawyer's Road. This is a kind of unique request. What the, what we're dealing with tonight is really the four acres that are located, kind of what I'm circling on the screen right now. The total project is 146 units, 14 are in Union County. It does have two access points, one on the Lawyer's Road, and another access point out onto Allen Black. And it is an age-restricted community, so it will, will be deed restricted for, for age groups. The reason we're only dealing with these 14 lots in Union County is because the, the remaining lots are in the town of Stallings. There's kind of a strange annexation agreement that Stallings and Mint Hill have that prevents Stallings from annexing this piece. It also prevents Mint Hill from annexing, or it doesn't, this is in Mint Hill's future annexation area, prevents Mint Hill from annexing the remainder of the development. So what we've got is a piece that's sort of, Mint Hill doesn't want to annex it, so right now it's in no man's land. Mint Hill and Stallings are working to try to amend this annexation agreement, but it doesn't impact just this one four-acre piece. It's a lot of different pieces along the common border they share. So the, the applicants coming through the county on these 14 lots. This is just kind of a general overview of the, of the request. These are just some pictures along Allen Black Road. Top left is looking at the property from the street. The top right is looking back toward Lawyer's Road. Bottom left is looking north along the property. And then this is the entrance, right there where the sign is, this is going to be where the entrance is on Lawyer's Road. Again, this is adjacent to Stallings. Stallings has approved the remaining portion that's in the town. So the vast majority of the development has already been approved by the town of Stallings. This just shows some of the existing land used in the area. Again, the piece that you're dealing with tonight is, is all vacant and undeveloped. There are some developed properties in the area. Just to the south, there is an existing subdivision. That's called Stevens Mill Subdivision. And then at the corner of Stevens Mill and Lawyer's Road, there's a fairly good-sized shopping center, the Harris Teeter, Anchor, and a CVS, McDonald's, daycare center, and different things like that. Zoning in the area, vast majority is, whether it's Union County or Stallings, is zoned R20, which is a 20, a half acre minimum lot size. There are some, some holes you've got here. It's some commercial, again, right at that commercial node at the corner. But the vast majority of everything is at R20 residential zoning. No major environmental features on this property, on the four-acre piece that we're dealing with. I think there are some, some stormwater issues that came up during the Stallings portion of the rezoning, but this, this portion will be collected by Stallings and then channeled this way. So it really won't impact these properties. Lawyer's Road is a future four-lane, identified as a future four-lane with curb and gutter. It's not funded at this time. There are 6,400, there's a traffic count of 6,400 vehicle trips a day on Stevens Mill. Those are the only traffic counts that we had in that general area. And our land use plan calls for this area to be mixed residential. You do have a back portion of this, again, that's inside the town of Stallings, kind of an intersection of agricultural, single-family, mixed residential. And then it's kind of, it's kind of hard to see on the map, but there's a different color neighborhood center right here that's kind of centered on that commercial center. So it is, it is consistent with, with the adopted plan. And I did want to really quickly. Union County does have an existing six-inch water main along Lawyer's Road and an eight-inch water main at the Stevens Mill and Lawyer's Road intersection. Upsizing of the water main may be required to meet the project demands. And the closest gravity sewer to serve the site is located at Stevens Mill Subdivision, which again is right here. The Stevens Mill Pump Station will be required to be decommissioned as part of the development, and off-site gravity sewer line extended to the existing sewer located at Courtyards at Emerald Lake, which you can kind of see the backside of Courtyards at Emerald Lake. That's another project that the same developer did. It's also age-restricted. And at this time, there is capacity at the Poplar Road Pump Station to serve this project. Even though this is an age-restricted development, we still send those off to the school system to do an evaluation. And based on the information we've gotten from the schools, this is in the Stallings Elementary Schools, in the Porter Ridge Cluster. So it's Stallings Elementary, Porter Ridge Middle, and Porter Ridge High. Stallings is currently at 77% capacity. Both Porter Ridge Middle and Porter Ridge High are above 95% capacity and are no longer accepting transfers for supportive education policy. The comprehensive plan, again, does, does show this as mixed residential, especially in the four-acre piece that we're dealing with. And mixed residential are areas that are, support increased density and different housing types. It does, again, this does appear consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. We've had significant conversations with the developer, and our concerns, staff's concerns have been addressed. Further, the vast majority of this development is inside the town of Stallings jurisdiction and has already been approved. The Planning Board considered this item at their May meeting. They heard a presentation from the applicant, and they made a unanimous recommendation to approve the URE zone. And these are just the property owners that were notified throughout the process of community meetings and planning board and meetings tonight. If you've got any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? I would ask that you explain the age-restricted and deeded, what that entails.
Yes, sir. So I'll try to do it briefly. There, there are, state law does allow communities to be age-restricted. That's the only kind of restriction you can really place on communities. So that is, that is something that's in the North Carolina Fair Housing Act, I think is what that's called. So you are allowed to restrict housing types, and that's, that's what this will use. It is, it will be deed restricted, so it will be, it'll, it'll be a condition. If it's approved, it'll be a condition on the approval. So there will be some, some zoning enforcement consequences if that's not met, but it'll also be administered by the Homeowners Association. So you're kind of hitting it from two angles. Does that answer your question?
Not completely. I guess because I heard, I'm aware of another type that actually limits. You can't live in there if you're under 18. Is that one of these, or is this?
So there, there, there really, in age-restricted communities, if, if somebody that lives in that community does have a, a student, the student can live there. It is rare for people that, that live in- It is rare for people that, that live in age-restricted communities to have school-aged children. I'm not sure that you can deed restrict to the point where you can't have children, period. But if somebody that, that is fifty-five and older or sixty-three and older has a child, that child can live there and go to that, go to that school. But again, generally, we found that folks that live in those communities don't have children.
Commissioner Rushen.
Thank you. Lee, we received a letter from one of the Stallings Town Council people with the concern of development in that area. If we don't do this, will that project still go through in Stallings or what happens to the project if we don't?
If it's not approved by the, the Board of Commissioners, then you're really limiting just fourteen, you're eliminating fourteen lots out of the development. There, there would be, I, I think there was a caveat to the Stallings approval that did, that did require a second access. That second access could still be built, because that's not really a subdivision of land, they would just be building the road. So that would be the developer's decision at that point is, do these fourteen lots, are they going to impact the, the bottom line of their, their development?
And where would this sewage be treated?
The sewage would go to Poplin Road Pump Station, and then that would be Pumper Twelve Mile.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one individual, Mike Davis, that signed up to speak on this.
Hello, my name's Mike Davis and entitled manager for Epcun Communities. So I'm the applicant in this case. I have a presentation if... Also have a handout too as well. Does it matter whether it's? Again, thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to, since we haven't been before this board, I'd like to give you a quick information about Epcun Communities and what we do. We are a privately-held home-building company. We've been building homes for fifty-five-plus population for about thirty-three years, and that's primarily all we do. We've been in the Charlotte market since two thousand and thirteen, and our communities are age-restricted, not age-targeted, it's quite different. And to expand a little bit more information on the age-restricted, HUD allows you to do age-restricted, in typical standard languages, eighty percent of the, the buyers have to be fifty-five or older. Okay? Now, in our communities, we average about sixty-seven, sixty-five in the Charlotte market. The, and we're a little different in, in, in that we do smaller communities, what I call boutique communities, anywhere from fifty to one hundred and fifty homes. We're not the, the big trilogy or the del web. We've been in Union, Union County and completed several projects and have several ongoing. They're just in the, the smaller municipalities. This one on the screen is Courtyards at Marvin. It's just a few miles south on Providence Road South from Newtown Road. The next one is, Lee mentioned, Courtyards at Emerald Lake, which is on Lawyer's Road. It is east of this project, probably about a half a mile to maybe three-quarters of a mile. The next one is Courtyards at Weddington, which is on Weddington Matthews Road, just north of Chestnut Lane. Again, here's our overall project. The area highlighted in pink is the area that Lee is talking about that we're requesting the rezoning. Stallings approved the project and a rezoning is age-restricted, and we would need the two entrances, so I want to make sure we'll build both entrances for the community. Here's just a blow-up of that area of the fourteen lots. And of course, if you have any questions, feel free to ask as we, as I go through this. What's unique about Epcun is that our rear yards are passive. And what, how we build our homes is that we have a side courtyard. So each home is built with a side courtyard and the adjacent home doesn't have any windows on that side or the court, on the opposite side of their home, or opposite of their courtyard. In the rear, there is a privacy fence installed, so the rear yard is passive and is maintained by the HOA. Here are a couple of elevations of our product. We use a composite siding, painted stone veneers on the front with brick accents, and, and we, we install a lot more landscaping than your typical home builder. Some of the benefits of an age-restricted community, good tax revenue to the, the town, county, schools benefit from the high real estate base, basis. Our average price in the Charlotte area is four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That's over two hundred dollars a square foot. We also, as I mentioned, use hardy siding, culture stone, brick accents, and architectural shingles. Also, our buyers support local businesses, restaurants, services nearby, and they are also very heavily involved in charity and community events. So, and our, our residents actually impact services less. Our traffic, based on ITE, which is the Institute of Traffic Engineers, has done recent studies and has calculations for traffic. Our communities generate about fifty percent less traffic than your typical traditional single-family home. Also, as a general rule, our, our studies have found that your typical single-family have three-point-three-six people per home. In our communities, it averaged from one-point-five to one-point-seven. And as, and as Lee had mentioned, there's little to no impact on schools. We found less than three percent Charlotte-wide, nationwide of the residents in our half-school-aged kids, and most of the time it's because of a extenuating circum, circumstance. And also, our communities are low crime. And that's just a short presentation, and if you guys have any questions about the project, about us, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lee, if you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The case will close the public hearing on Courtyards on Lawyer's Road. Item number six. Item is a public hearing for the rezoning CZ Brewer Henley Highway Two Hundred Site. I will open the public hearing and Lee Jensen, Senior Planner, will present the rezoning request.
Again, this is CZ twenty nineteen zero zero three, the Brewer Henley Highway Two Hundred Site. This is general overview of the plan. It is a request to rezone the parcel from RA forty, which is residential agricultural forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, to B four, conditional district, which is a, a general commercial conditional district. The applicant wants to develop this as a forty-two hundred square foot convenience store. Uses on the site of approved will be limited to a convenience store, fuel canopies, fuel pumps, and other related items. Since this is a conditional request, the district would be bound by all conceptual plans and conditions approved as part of the process. This property is kind of at the southeast corner of Highway Two Hundred and Rocky River Road. There's a future traffic circle at this location. It'll be a five-leg traffic circle, so Two Hundred, Two Hundred, Rocky River, Rocky River, and then Parkwood School Road would tie into that as well. Access on to Rocky River would be limited to a right-in, right-out, and access on to Two Hundred would be right-in, right-out and a leftover. There's some representative images of the building that were provided by the applicant, so this is their standard, a Market Express store, brick accents on the front. There's a color version with some brick accents and stucco. Top-left image is the property in question, straight on with the sign on it. That's the property in question. This is looking toward, Two Hundred toward Monroe, so that's standing in the intersection looking back toward Monroe. This is looking back toward, towards Jackson Township. And then this is across the street, that's a vacant, I think that used to be a nursery center, and then rough-edged stores right out of the picture right there, just to kind of give you a framework of where you are. There are no municipalities in the immediate area, the closest one would be to the northwest, and that's Mineral Springs. So this is a mainly just unincorporated, unincorporated area. That property currently has a house on it, so there's a single-family residence on the property now that would be torn down to accommodate the, the store. And then the surrounding land uses are a mix of commercial, residential, agricultural. You've got some store across the street. You've got a school, Parkwood High School and Middle School are not too far away, some storage units, the county has a convenience site there, so there's a good mix of uses going on. Most of the properties in this area are served, you've got a mix. You've got some that are served by Union County Water and some that are served by individual septic systems and wells. This project is proposed to be served by Union County Public Works Water and a septic system. Public Works states that there's an eight-inch water main located along Lancaster Highway and South Rocky River Road. Sewer, sewer is not accessible to the property. The applicant did engage a private soil scientist to evaluate the property for a septic system, and they've worked through him and feel like they've gotten an improved system. All that would be, need to be finalized with environmental health before they move forward. Current zoning on the property is RA forty. There is some commercial zoning across the street, and then these little bullet points, this is the rough-edged store site. The front part of that property is zoned commercial and the rear part is zoned residential. And there's another piece here that has a cutout. This is, it's currently a field, but there's a cutout in it that's got some B four in it as, as well, and the rest of it's RA forty. Since this is a proposed commercial land use, no school impacts were anticipated from children going to school from the site. No major environmental features on the property. This is sort of the, there will be a stormwater pond at the intersection, but otherwise no major environmental features on the property. Again, as I mentioned before, there is an NC DOT project to build around about in two thousand and twenty. There were a few traffic counts in the area, going back toward Monroe on Highway Two Hundred, we had about eighty-two hundred trips a day, and south of the site on Two Hundred, you had about, it dropped to about fifty-three. And then both north and south of the site on Rocky River is around forty-eight hundred trips per day. And these are all proposed to be, to stay two-lane, two-lane roads in the future from the CFTB. Land use plan does designate this intersection as a rural center. You also have, outside of that, you have the low-density agricultural areas and low-density single-family residential that kind of come together right there near the intersection. Rural centers function as small-scale civic and commercial centers for rural areas of the county. These centers are clusters of low-density non-residential uses located at a crossroads of two or more major or minor intersections. I'm sorry, major or minor thoroughfares. Appropriate uses include convenience stores, civic buildings, gas stations, and others, and rural centers provide limited commercial and community services while still maintaining the rural nature of the community. Again, this is just a map that we like to throw in that shows the properties that were notified as part of the process. The rezoning request does appear to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The applicant has addressed staff's concerns and has addressed some of the concerns raised from the community meetings. So we would recommend approval. The planning board considered this request at their May meeting. They heard a presentation from the applicant and also heard several concerns from nearby residents. Some of those residents' concerns, and I'm not going to try to hit all of them, but I'm going to hit some of the ones that I heard the most, were traffic, crime, increased noise, increased light, and the, and increased development pressure in the area. The board, after hearing from both sides, ultimately made a unanimous recommendation to approve the development. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Jensen?
Lee, can you go back to your, right there? As I understand it, with the roundabout, if you're coming, Parkwood School Road, you can't go back on Rocky River Road. You have to go all the way around the roundabout to go back. There's no...
Right.
Okay, so if I'm coming, like I said, be south from, towards Charlotte on Rocky River Road going towards South Carolina, I can't turn left into that facility? Once I get back on Rocky River Road?
Correct. It's a, it'll be a right-in, right-out on Rocky River. So you would only be able to turn right out of the development and make a right in the development.
So I'm going to have to go up Two Hundred and go in?
And do a leftover, yes, sir. Actually, the leftover is coming from, from this direction.
How would you get back on? You can't do a left-out. Come out the lower.
Well, no, if you went around the roundabout and you're heading up Two Hundred, you would make a right in the facility.
Correct.
Right.
And how am I going to get back on Rocky River Road South to go home?
You could come out, make a leftover, go around.
You said that's right-in, right-out.
This is a right-in, right-out.
Oh, that's not.
Right.
So I can come back out the same way I went in and turn a left on to Two Hundred?
Well, you could, you could make a right, go through the traffic circle, because this is, this was a leftover this way. So if you want to head south on Rocky River, you would come out, turn right, go through the traffic circle, and go back south.
Okay.
Sorry. Didn't mean to just lead you there.
And as, as Commissioner Rushen mentioned, you cannot, can you or cannot you go back left on to Two Hundred?
No.
No. Okay. Thank you.
There is a left, there's a leftover this way. Right, only into the site.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, Lee, we have some individuals that like to...
All right.
...share with us their thoughts. We'll begin with a, yes, sir? I think Mr. Brewer's listed here.
Anybody know how to get the PowerPoint up?
Good evening. I'm Buddy Brewer with Brewer Henley Oil Company and Market Express Stores. I thought...
I thought I'd start tonight by giving you a little bit of background on our company. We've been in Union County about thirty-five years. I think we were established around 1982 by my father, Bill Brewer, and John Henley, who are present tonight. We've been headquartered here for that entire time. Our Market Express Convenience Store Division consists of fourteen locations, fourteen stores, several of which are local. We also supply another thirty-six dealer stores. In addition to our Market Express stores, we have four divisions, which I've listed there. We distribute lubricants, commercial fuels, and diesel exhaust fluid throughout the Carolinas and Georgia. Right now, we employ three-hundred-and-forty employees, and a good many of those workers are right here in Union County. Lee did a great job of explaining what we're proposing here. We have in contract four-point-four-nine acres at the corner of 200 and Rocky River Road. Took us a little while to develop this because the soil didn't perk on the corner as well as we would like it to, so we had to get an option or a contract on the adjacent piece. So we now have had the septic worked out, and we're proposing a forty-two-hundred-square-foot state-of-the-art convenience store. It'll be branded Shell, and of course sell all grades of Shell gasoline. I've listed a few of the features that we'll have on the inside of the store. We will have a grill or a small restaurant inside. At this time, we're exploring different food partners. We have a number of different foods that we partner with in our stores, and if, you know, the zoning's passed, we'll get into that a little further. We've got, we will have inside and outside seating. We'll have an ice cream shop in the store, a slushy bar. We will feature a gourmet coffee and tea bar. This site will participate in the North Carolina Educational Lottery, and we will have an ATM on-site as well. You know, we wanted to do our due diligence before we came, before you guys and asked for this rezoning, and so we feel like we've done a good bit of that. And one thing we always start out with when we're going to build a store is we have a company that specializes in projecting what convenience stores, what the volume they'll do in gas, inside restaurant, car wash, that type thing. And so we hired this company coming out of Texas, and the results came back real favorable and showed that there's definitely a need there. And this company spends a lot of time and very expensive study, and so we, you know, we really feel like even with the addition of us there, there's room for us and the other store. And I certainly hope we both can do well and survive out there. The second thing we did is we hired Raimi Kemp Engineering to do our traffic impact analysis. As Lee mentioned to you, didn't get everything we wanted. We were asking for full access at both entrances, one on Rocky River and one on 200. But as the D O T explained to me, what they would like to see is they, rather than cars going in and out of our entrance, they want to see people using the roundabout. So on, to answer to your question earlier, if you're pulling out on 522 and you need to go south, they want you to take a right out, go around the circle, and head home. And they think that's a safer movement than cars coming in and out of the entrances. So we felt like we can certainly live with that. But both the D O T and Union County have approved the traffic analysis. The next thing is septic design. I mentioned that the corner parcel wouldn't perk properly, so we have an option on the land beside it, and on that adjacent piece of land is where we will put the drain lines and the repair field for the septic. Chris Hope Engineering has already approved this, and if zoning passes, at that time, we can make an easement on that second property, and the county will approve it. Screening and buffering, we met with the neighbors a few months ago and heard their concerns and really tried to take it to heart, and I tried to listen to them as if, you know, I lived in those houses because I, we certainly want to maintain their privacy and don't want to hinder them in any way. So several of them are here tonight, and I've had a lot of conversations with them. So we have agreed to go well above and beyond what Union County's requirements are for screening and buffering, to hopefully do a good job of protecting them from our traffic or lights or whatever we may have there. So I've listed what we have planned. We are offering to put a three-foot berm with a six-foot-high solid fence on top of the berm. So you've got eleven feet total there, and then behind the fence, we have agreed to put much more screening and trees than the county requires. And we've agreed to do eight-foot evergreens, they're supposedly the fastest-growing one you can get, and put them in a spacing of ten feet apart. So hopefully, in a matter of time, we can, you know, really protect the neighbors back there. In addition to that, we, even though the county is not requiring us to do anything on the adjacent property that we have under contract where the sewer lines would be, we're going to run the fence, the length of that property as well to help protect them. And then we're trying to work out something with one of the neighbors who's here tonight, on giving him an allowance to where he can put screening on just his side of the property line. We're a little tight right there on space, so hopefully that'll work out. Another way we're going to do our best to help the neighboring properties is with lighting. Nowadays, you can do some really neat things with LED lights, whether it's recessing them or shining them straight down or shielding them, and with some of the stuff we've done in the past, I really don't think lighting's going to be an issue for the neighbors there. And I told them in the planning board that we would certainly make that, you know, one of the contingencies as far as having less lighting in the rear. We do want to offer security for our clerks, whether they're taking the trash out or sweeping the lot or whatever, but we're certainly going to be conscious of their homes back Hours of operation, the store will close no later than 11 o'clock. Definitely won't be a twenty-four-hour store. We will be open seven days a week. I wanted to mention, too, you know, wherever we put a store, we certainly try to get involved in the community. This is just a few areas that, you know, civic organizations that we donate to, and we care about Union County, and we certainly want to make a difference. I won't go too much into this since Lee did a great job with it, but this is the color rendering. Stack stone, masonry, stucco. We think it's a neat design. If you will look on the next slide, it details the materials a little bit. You'll notice that we've, we've got a wall there to hide the HVAC and refrigeration units in the back. The engineers are talking about maybe having to move some of those on the roof. If that's the case, we'll certainly build a parapet wall to hide them there as well. But we think that Chris Hope came up with an attractive design for us there that will blend in nicely. And lastly, this is the site plan that Lee had, and we've also gone through the process of determining that the detention will work. So they've shot the elevations and sized the detention pond and all that. So we've done our due diligence there. And I did want to mention, if you'll see the berm cross-section at the bottom there, the bottom left, that's, that is what we would like to build, the full length of the property and, gosh, I think it's four-hundred-and-fifty feet or something like that. But so hopefully that, like I said, gives the neighbors some privacy. If that's it, we would certainly appreciate y'all's help in letting us build a store at Rough Edge and making that the home of our newest store. So be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Brewer? Thank you, sir.
Good. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Kelly Little.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight in support of this store. My name is Kelly Little. I live about one mile from the proposed site. I have lived here for over sixteen years. Some issues that have been mentioned I would like to address. Number one, people are against losing the country feel in the community. Progress is coming. I live on a farm, and I choose to, and I choose to because of it being in the country. I do not like progress either. However, our community has grown so much it can support two stores. You can't get into Rough Edge at 3:15 due to all the high school kids who hang out there. I'm just as uncertain of change as anyone, but it's here and I have to embrace it. North Carolina D O T is adding a circle at this intersection due to the growth. Number two, they were against beer coming to the community. Do you consider three-point-two miles away the same community? Beer and wine are sold three-point-two miles from Rough Edge, so why is this an issue? Number three, as the neighbors behind it, if this store doesn't come, something will. By Union County code, they only have to put trees and shrubs six feet tall. Would you rather have a local family-owned business that has agreed for a three-foot berm and an eight-foot fence on top in addition to the fast-growing evergreens? I know this is hard, but just imagine how hard it could be with a large corporation company who does just what is required. Last but not least, it's been said this store will run the small, older store out of business. I asked those to read the federal antitrust laws. These laws promote competition. Also, since we did competition, also since we ended competition, become a bad thing. It causes people to strive to do more than is required, which will always benefit the community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Brandon?
Brandon Burnett, 5302 Stonewood Drive. I'm going to be one of the new neighbors. Planning board meeting, you know, we pled our case, security, privacy, and everything, and I one-hundred percent appreciate Mr. Brewer proposing the fence, trees. However, you know, he's doing everything he can to be a good neighbor, but he's not going to be my neighbor. Convenience store's going to be my neighbor. So, you know, a mile away, three miles away, everybody's got an opinion, but fifty feet off the building, I've lived in that house for thirteen years, and, you know, neighbors in the neighborhood, somebody pulls in the driveway, they call you. You know, you don't really have to worry about anything. Leave the door unlocked, that kind of thing, and hate to lose some of that feel. That's why all of me and my neighbors, I think, moved to that neighborhood. We can't have a hundred acres, so it's the next best thing. My only other concern, and I'll say that after the planning board and their approval, it's kind of my final hail mary, if you will. Two of the neighbors right beside me that are not here, the Pennegras, they are any time planning to start their family. Mr. Belt, who also joins this property line, has a little boy. And the neighbors directly across in front of me are not here tonight because she's thirty-six weeks and could be anytime. So my one other concern, request, would be that this store closes at 9:00 P. M. You know, competitors across the street are closed at 9:00 P. M. You're not going to lose any business to them. And the majority of the Market Express stores I'm familiar with don't join residential property lines. Let us go to bed at a decent time and get up, get up early and go to work. That'd be my, my one other request that be considered. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Karen Penneger?
Good evening. My name is Karen Penneger. I live at 5312 Stonewood Drive. I am an adjoining property owner to 5307 and 5315 Lancaster Highway. I'm here tonight to ask the rezoning in request be denied. I've been a member of the Rough Edge community for twenty-five years. As the rest of Union County has exploded with growth, our community has remained somewhat sheltered. We have not experienced the burden on our infrastructure that has become a reality to many adjoining communities. I feel that should this rezoning be approved, it will open those very doors that have become the downfall of other small communities. And as an adjoining property owner, I have enjoyed the rural lifestyle and do not look forward to the increased traffic, noise, lights, and the activities of patrons that will visit a store that sells alcohol, especially in the name of preserving the atmosphere of a small community built around local schools. We already have a community landmark and convenience store in Rough Edge Trading Post that refuses to sell alcohol due to the proximity of the school. At our community meeting with Brewer Henley, Buddy Brewer was cognizant to the lifestyle and environmental adjustments that would be incurred with the construction of a convenience store. And although he has made many concessions to the plans, there will be no way to completely eliminate all of them. So I stand here before you with two-hundred-and-sixty-seven signatures on a petition and ask that you deny the rezoning to this property and preserve our small community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. If we have no one else to speak, Lee, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing on Brewer Henley. Next, we have item number seven, which is the Dixon Farm. This is a public hearing for rezoning of C Z 2019-005 Dixon Farm. I'll open the public hearing, and Lee Jensen, Senior Planner, will present the rezoning request.
Again, as you stated, this is C Z 2019-005 Dixon Farms. This is a request to, a rezoning request to amend the zoning map of Union County to rezon a parcel of land from R forty, which is residential forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, to R six conditional, which would be residential six thousand square foot minimum lot size. The applicant requests the rezoning in order to develop a single-family neighborhood with a maximum of four-hundred-and-thirty-one homes. The project will also consist of common open space for use by the residents, a clubhouse and a pool. The project has three points of access on Weddington Road. All three of those are full-access movements. The project will meet setbacks of twenty-five feet in the front, twenty-five in the rear, and eight feet on the sides for all lots. Since this is a conditional request, the district will be bound by all conceptual plans and conditions that would be approved as part of the process. This is the general layout of the neighborhood. This is Weddington Road. The three access point, I was, three access points I was talking about are here, here, and here. So this is kind of a little pod that sits on its own. I will note that it would be connected to the rest of the neighborhood with a pedestrian walkway and a bridge that goes over this creek. Developers initially proposed a road connection, but through some conversations, mainly with staff, that was eliminated and... that was eliminated and replaced with the walking structures that you would cross that stream. A lot of open space in the neighborhood. The amenity area is located, kind of where I'm circling, that's about the place where the existing home and barn are located. If you're familiar with this property, if you're not, hopefully the next few slides will, you'll probably recognize it, I think. But again, four hundred and thirty-one homes, a large amenity area, three access points, and two point four dwelling units per acre. Some of the homes, I'm just gonna kind of go through these slides real quickly. These are some of the pro, proposed images that the developers proposing to build. And then this is the property in question. Across the street on the top left, this is Weddington Road. This is a, a small road called Keel Road that I'm kind of standing in when I took these photographs. So just kind of orient you a little bit better. So that's the property in question across the street. This is looking eighty-four, heading back toward Monroe, Weddington Road going back toward Monroe. Saint John's Forest would be just about where my cursor is. This is looking west down Weddington Road toward the traffic circle at Airport, Airport Road. And this is the property across the street. This, this property is currently in review for another subdivision called Weddington Point. I think it's about two hundred and twenty-five homes. I'll, I'll go over those in just a few minutes. Again, this is the unincorporated Union County, and all the properties immediately touching it are unincorporated. Wesley Chapel lies just to the west, and Monroe lies just to the north of this piece of property. Property is currently vacant except for a, a large house and a barn. The rest of it's currently cultivated in crops. The zoning in the area is, is mainly either R forty or R eight forty. So you've got R forty, just, you know, this, in this area. You do have some R twenty kind of to the east going back toward Monroe and some R twenty to the north. But generally on the south side of eighty-four, you have R eight forty or R forty. There is a creek with floodplain that goes through the property. That was designated as open space on the plan. So that, that creek and the buffer areas and the floodplain are all located in the open space. There are some wetlands back behind the house. Majority of those were preserved as part of the plan. There were some slight impacts to those wetlands. And that's actually where the sewer line that will serve that, that property is located. I want to jump back to the surrounding land uses real quick. They are primarily residential and agricultural. So you've got a lot of agricultural development now. There are, however, several approved in-process developments that I should point out that you may not know about. Across the street, I mentioned there was Weddington Point. That's a two hundred and twenty-five unit, single-family subdivision. That was a rezoning that initially came to the board, I think, back in twenty thirteen. It was a PUD approval before the new U D O was adopted. That was approved by the board. We later took it back, we brought it back before the board to, to rezone it from the PUD to similar districts that were in our, our ordinance. Our, our PUD provisions were, were not the best in the world, so we, we eliminated that, rezoned it to something that was similar. So that is currently in review right now. Creeks Landing, which is just to the west of the project, is about two hundred units. It's a cluster subdivision. It was by right, so it didn't require rezoning. Ellington Downs is a subdivision, kind of where my cursor is, just to the west of the traffic circle. It's about a hundred and forty units. It was a rezoning that was approved. And then you've also got Saint John's Forest, which is completely developed out, but it's approximately six hundred units. I think it's just a little bit north of that, but it's a fairly large development as well. Most properties in this area are served by Union County Water and Sewer. Water and Sewer is accessible to the property. There's a six inch, sixteen inch water main located along Weddington Road that will serve the project. And there's a fifteen foot, or fifteen inch sanitary sewer main that traverses the property. As far as transportation impacts go, Weddington Road is designated as a future four-lane cross-section. And we had, there's a DOT project at the intersection of Weddington and Potter to add turn lanes in twenty twenty. Had a couple of different traffic counts in the area. Weddington Road, near the intersection of Willoughby, you had about twelve thousand vehicle trips a day. And just to the west of the site, you had about fifteen thousand vehicle trips per day. The schools, this area is in the Sun Valley Cluster. And the elementary school students would go to Rocky River Elementary School. It's currently at seventy-two percent of capacity. And they'll, the middle school and high school students would go to Sun Valley Middle and High School. And they are currently, the middle school's at a hundred percent of capacity, and Sun Valley High School is at ninety-four percent of capacity. Sun Valley Middle School is no longer accepting transfers due to its high enrollment. Our planning documents show this as a combination of mixed residential and single-family residential. So you've got the mix that kind of comes through here, and you've got the single-family residential that kind of butts up to it there. The mixed residential category anticipates higher density residential patterns with different housing types, such as townhomes, patio homes, and apartments. And the single-family category anticipates lower density, single-family residential patterns. Since this project is at the intersection of the two categories, it is anticipated under the plan that slightly higher density, single-family home patterns will develop. We have had significant conversations with the applicant regarding the project. The proposed density of two point four units per acre, we feel is slightly higher than the surrounding neighborhoods. But it's not much higher than the surrounding neighborhoods. That, most of the neighborhoods are in the one point nine to two point two. So it's a little bit higher than the, than the other ones. Lot sizes in the proposed develop, in the proposed neighborhoods are very similar to surrounding developments. Again, some of these were cluster developments, fifteen thousand square foot lot sizes in Creeks Landing. The lot sizes in Saint John's Forest are fairly similar to this as well. The development contains a good deal of open space and preserves some environmentally sensitive areas. It also provides good future connectivity to adjacent properties, given that staff can support the request. The planning board considered this item at their May meeting. They heard presentation from the applicant. There were no people that spoke against the project, and they voted five to two to make a recommendation to approve the rezoning. The descending board members did state that they felt that the development would add too much traffic to Weddington Road, and that the schools in the area could not handle the additional students. Again, last map, these are the folks that were notified regarding the rezoning. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Commissioner Rush?
Yes, sir.
Any, one question maybe for a future. If you could show us like the school zones on one of the maps, that would be helpful.
Yes, sir. We, we have talked to the schools, and I think on future rezoning cases, you will see a little bit more information. And we have for future rezoning school information for you, so that will be available. I'm sorry.
Now, how far away from Parkwood Tenement signs is this project?
I, I'm not sure. That's, that's why we want to show you that.
Lee, my question is, talked about middle school being at a hundred percent.
Yes, sir.
And the high school's at ninety-four.
Yes, sir.
That's not taking into consideration the other projects in the area that are in current build-out stage?
The other rezonings, is that what you're?
Yeah. Well, there, some of them are actually in.
In the town.
In the build-out.
Right. Yes, sir. You're, you're correct. So, yeah, the ones that I, that I went over are mostly in planning stages. There's a couple that were kind of in construction. But, but you're correct. Those numbers are based on today and not future build-out numbers.
And if I recall, across the street, that's actually Monroe's. It's not. Okay. I got a.
I'm sorry?
Head nod in the back that said, no, it wasn't right, and she's the authority.
Right.
Okay. Any questions, Jess? I know, we just, she's just.
Across the street, across Weddington Road?
Yeah.
Right here.
Saint John's Forest is in the Sun Valley Cluster.
Right.
Okay. But I thought, I thought the corner property up from that was actually in Monroe, if I recall from the last.
Are you talking about Airport?
Yeah, right at the corner of Airport.
I believe that one was.
The airport's all Sun Valley.
Yeah.
Is it? Okay.
Some of the others you mentioned, the one with the creek in it at the roundabout, and Ellington Downs, that's Weddington.
Yeah.
So the roundabout is the division between Sun Valley and Weddington Cluster. And then I think Rocky River is the deciding line from Monroe School, Rocky River.
That's Ms. Hightell, Vice Chair of the School Board, so we appreciate her contribution.
Where does that property fall in the flight pattern for Monroe Airport?
I don't have that slide. We do, we do have a slide that shows that, but airplanes do fly directly over that property.
Corporate jets, I believe.
Yes.
Loud corporate jets.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We have a, a number of people that'd like to share their thoughts. Rodney Helms.
Would the developer like to go before me, in case he brings up any of that one?
Do we have the developer here?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Colin Brown. I'm a partner with the law firm of K and L Gates in Charlotte. I'm a land use attorney, representing Lennar Carolinas LLC, and the property enters the Dixon family. With me tonight from Lennar is David Nelson. Lennar is the largest home builder in the country with a strong presence here in the Carolinas market. I'm gonna give you an overview, but our entire team that I'll introduce here is with us tonight. So if you have specific questions, we're happy to answer them. David will be handling questions about Lennar, any product type questions. Land Design is doing the site design and civil engineering. Mark Com is here, and Kim Lee Horn has done our traffic study, so Brady Finkley's here as well. I think Lee's done a real good job with the location of the site. Kind of skip through that. We do have some other photos for you to see here. It is a beautiful piece of land, no dispute about that. This is a look from the road into the site. Lee mentions tough to see here, the existing home and barn. I'll show you on the site plan. The hope is that these could be kept and that that could serve as a clubhouse amenity area. And you'll see one of the thoughts is that we try to preserve this view corridor from the, from the street into the site. As Lee mentioned, we are proposing an R six C D zoning. One of the main reasons for that, we're, we're not really looking to squeeze a lot of density. We're not using that district for density purposes. We're using it for the site design flexibility. Here is a rendering of the site. One of the things you'll see, I mentioned, if you were on the road looking in, here is the existing home. Trying to keep a lot of open space. So the, the real push of this rezoning is for the flexibility and the site design. Lee mentioned on the property, we're proposing four hundred and thirty-one homes. I know that sounds like a very large number, but please understand this is a very large piece of property. This is a hundred and seventy-eight acres. So across the spread of the site, that is less than two and a half units per acre. And one of the things you'll see is the amount of open space on the site is about sixty-five acres. So almost a third of the site would be not privately owned. And that gives us a way to preserve a lot of these open spaces, have some pocket parks coming through the site in these locations, have a nice linear park connecting things up. As Lee mentioned, we had conversations about having a vehicular connection between these two pods. We decided against that. There would be a PED connection. But really trying to leave sensitive areas undisturbed and provide as much open space as we possibly can. As you know, this is a conditional rezoning plan. I think Lee's done a good job of hitting the high points here. I think staff has given us good information. We've tried to respond to all of those. I think the team's done a good job of doing that. We've had a couple of community meetings with neighbors, and some of them are here tonight. A lot of these are families that have been in this, this area a long, long time. And I'm sure as everyone, they, they like to look at this beautiful hundred and seventy-eight acres next door as it is. But we think if you look at, I think, the infrastructure of the counties installed out there, land use plan calls for some higher density and mix of residential and part of it, single-family on the other. We think our density's in the right area. Also, with the sewer infrastructure, the water infrastructure, I think it's everyone's expectation that we will see this property develop. And so we've had, I think, good conversations with the neighbors. I know no one's gonna be excited about this. I don't know if we'll get everyone on board, but we're trying to address as many concerns as we can. One of the things that Lennar wants to do on the site, you heard earlier, EPCOM talk about an age-restricted product. Lennar's not looking at age-restricted, but they're looking at age-targeted. So for about fifty percent of the site, they would build a kind of smaller, single-family product that's targeted for those fifty-five and older. There's not a deed restriction saying that no young people can live there, but this is what they do. They know the market sector, sector of buyers coming in for that. So one of the things the neighbors ask us when we talked about that, I think most you'll hear from live along this property line in this location. The church is here, close to us. And so one of the things we talked about was would Lennar be willing to commit to providing those age-targeted one-story units in that location, so there'd be lower units. I think meetings with the neighbors occurred as recently as last week. We are, so Lennar is prepared to commit to that, and we'll provide a follow-up plan. So to show you, these are some of the comments we heard. Wanting age-targeting next door, wanted some buffering between those existing properties in our site. Could we have two-car garages? Want to make sure there's plenty of parking. Folks did not want to see vinyl-sided homes. They hoped that we would not annex it to Monroe. There's some interesting stormwater challenges out there, and that's something they wanted the civil team to look at. And then I think everyone was concerned about the aesthetics along the front entrance. So it's kind of in response to that feedback, this is not things that the county asked for. But Lennar is prepared to commit that any of the new lots along this property line would be the age-targeted product. In addition, willing to commit to about two thousand feet of fencing along that property line to provide a little physical boundary between our site and some of those property owners. You'll see here also, and it's tougher to see on this black and white model, but there, we acknowledge there is, there's some stormwater activity in there. These is where, this is where our BMP ponds would be located, so showing those in there. And that breaks up and gets some of the, gets homes off that property line, and it'll be more natural open area. So we are, the plan that Lee's seen doesn't have those commitments, but we'll follow in this hearing. We're, we're happy to provide an updated plan that provides for the age-targeted there, that provides the wall. We have committed to two-car garages. We've committed to no vinyl as a building product. We might have some on along windows and trim, but not siding materials. And happy to continue talking with your staff and others about the other issues. As Lee mentioned, I, I think we're pretty comparable to nearby developments. Saint John's Forest across the street, their lot sizes in fact can be a little bit lower than ours. So we think our density and lot sizes are very comparable to what we're seeing in the neighborhood. I think Lennar's product, happy to let David answer questions about the product type. I think it's a, probably a step up from some of the other stuff that we're seeing coming in the area. I think Lennar's pushing the market on their standard product as well as their age-targeted product. So that's just a kind of a general overview. David, do you have anything you want to add before we take questions?
Hi, I'm David Nelson. I'm the Director of Land Acquisition for Lennar in Charlotte. One of the things I did want to just touch on briefly is this age-targeted versus age-restricted. Just to sort of set the stage for that, because we do a lot of age-restricted communities. We have large, like Sun City, master-planned communities. We have actually two of those currently in Charlotte and a third in the planning stage. Those are based, those are, you're able to discriminate about who can live in those communities based on the, the, a law that was passed in nineteen ninety-five by the Congress. And that's called the, the Housing for Older Persons Act. And what that says is that as long as you have eighty percent of the homes in that community that are restricted to people with one resident fifty-five years or older, you can, you can make deed restrictions to prohibit children. That's the way that the, that the government got around that being legal to discriminate for who can live there. That's the way that the, that the government got around that being legal to discriminate for who can live there. So, uh, our age targeted communities aren't restricted that way, but we sell, because of we target the product specifically and how we advertise it and how it's designed, we sell over eighty percent of those homes to people fifty-five years or older anyway. So I, I think it's just a distinction. Uh, many people think that the age restricted thing is somehow a panacea that fixes a lot of, uh, perceived ills in the community. And in reality, all it does is it makes the future of those one day down the road, when the baby boom generation is no longer buying those homes because they've aged out. And the, the people that come behind that, which there's a smaller number of those people coming behind them, who's gonna buy all those age restricted homes at that point? Because then they are restricted by, by law. So I think it, it's a, it's a distinction that, and you know, I would encourage you to, to, to research that and fully understand the difference between age targeted and age restricted because, uh, we sell just as many homes to that, to that buyer in an age targeted community because they're, everybody doesn't want to live in Sun City. That's fifty, that's my age. I'm sixty-three. So they, we don't all want to live there. Some people want to live in a community where their, where their grandchildren live. And they can live down the street from them. They can both go to the swimming pool together and they can do it. And so it's a different, it's a different community concept. The one thing that Colin did point out about the linear park in this, um, in this, uh, slide is kind of lost a little bit in scale. This linear park that runs through the middle of this community is over a hundred feet wide. So think about the, the width of this room. I don't know what the width of this room is. It's about fifty feet. So it'd be twice as wide as this room. So just in scale, keep that in your mind as you're thinking about the, the scale of the open spaces that are on this plan. So be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
And Commissioner Rushing, I think you've got your answer, your question answered. Uh, the Weddington Zone is down by the Roundabout. We'd be in, in the Sun Valley Cluster. Elementary school is under capacity. Uh, we have read the McKibben report that the county had done, uh, and our understanding of that report, the three schools that we would be impacting here are projected to have declining enrollments over the next decade. That's based on y'all's, our understanding of y'all's report.
Any question? Commissioner Ray?
That's not, that's not my understanding of the projections. There's a lot of subdivisions that are already approved, some in Indian Trail and Stallons. And those children are, are going to Sun Valley Middle and Sun Valley High. And it's, I liken it to a barrage of incoming students from all around it.
Well, that's not our report, so I won't question you on that. We're just, I said, that's not our, we didn't write the report. I'll take your word for that.
I was on the school board when that report was given.
Can you back up a couple of slides? Because you, you had a bullet on there that, uh...
Tell me what you're asking.
Uh, well, it was, it was, it was a reference to not annexing into Monroe.
But that, that was something the neighbors had mentioned that would be their preference. I think we share that preference.
How close is, maybe Lee can answer that. How close is Monroe to this project?
We're not contiguous.
No, it's not contiguous. I can, I can bring yours back up in a second. There we go. So the closest area to Monroe would be to the north, actually, um, kind of toward the airport. So you can see City of Monroe doesn't, uh, doesn't show up on the map to the east.
Yeah, I didn't remember seeing that.
It'd be, be fairly close, um, just off this map, but, you know, the closest, closest point is the airport.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Then we'll move back to Mr. Helms, Rodney Helms. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for giving me time to talk and share our concerns for the, you know, the neighbors to the neighborhood. Uh, I am joining property. I wish I had Mr. Brown leave here. Do you mind putting your firepoint up? Thank you. I am a neighbor to the joint, I'm a joining property to him. Grown up in Union County my entire life. Uh, I would love to see it stay afield, but I know it's not gonna stay afield. Right now it's zoned R forty. Actually, uh, which one?
Look at where you have the neighborhood.
The color.
There we go.
So, um, we realize this growth is going, it's gonna get developed eventually one of these days. We're asking you to do controlled development. They have been gracious to meet with us a couple of times and, uh, but we're concerned with the density of houses, number of traffic in different aisles. Couple areas I'm concerned is the traffic. I was told there's gonna be a traffic study done, or it might be a partial one already started. My question is, if the traffic studies that's been done in Union County are correct, why are we having such bad, having problems already? I would challenge you guys to come down Weddington Road, seven o'clock in the morning, try going towards Weddington and come back at about five o'clock. I have, we, the Roundabout Airport Road, I can tell you at seven o'clock in the morning, traffic backs up from there to Westy Chapel. Going to during the schools, during the school year. Uh, after school, Siler, Target there, everything, it backups, it backs up from there coming into Westy Chapel in the east. So I know there's traffic studies done for all these other neighborhoods, but why do we have this kind of backup? I'm an engineer of record myself. I know how some of this goes. You do calculations based on the data you have now. You do some assumptions and you use some agreed upon, um, factors and you make a calculation. Well, they're not right. And now we want to dump, uh, all these houses back onto Weddington Road. I can tell you from experience, uh, my daughter had a wreck at the intersection of Saint John's Forest. Somebody clipped the back of her car, hit and run. You don't, you don't hit the back of somebody's car unless you're trying to shoot a gap, trying to get out in traffic. And, um, so we have experience of what the traffic does to us in the area. In a perfect world, they could do the calculations, engineers do calculations, and you guys wouldn't even be needed. They can just put developments wherever the numbers work out, but they don't work. So we're relying on you guys to taste and see what's going on in our community, put some common sense to what they're presenting to you. Also, if traffic's not a issue on Highway eighty-four, they, the new development going in the Roundabout on Airport Road, are you guys familiar with that new development there? They shut the Roundabout down for approximately a little, less than two months. All they did was put a concrete entry, I mean, asphalt entrance into the Roundabout. They didn't cut in the asphalt out. Why did they not leave the, why did they not leave the Roundabout open for two months and use construction guys doing signs and let people in and out? The reason is they can't control the traffic. It would back up too much doing that during that time. So we had to shut down a traffic circle, um, to put a entrance in there. So it tells you what kind of traffic we got going on our area. Other thing connecting to the two areas right here, he's got, uh, the one community here, two entrances over here. They had talked about putting a, a drive between here, but it's not happening. So what happens if people in this one area of the community wants to go to the clubhouse or want to go to the pool? There's a hundred degrees outside. They're not gonna walk, walk past. They're gonna hop in their car, drag, pull out on eighty-four, turn around, pull right back in, adding to the, uh, congestion and everything. Other concern I have is water runoff. Um, my property is over in here. Uh, we have a creek that comes out of Saint John's Forest that they're retaining ponds dumping to our property. I know they say they do the calculations, so they put less water, same, same amount or less water onto you, but they're funneling into a smaller area. So the dry, wet weather creek that runs in front of my house, I have a bridge that's five foot above it. The rainstorm we had about a month ago where it came down for like an hour or two in the afternoon, it was a dry before that. It was up to within a foot of my bridge. A lot of water's coming out of Saint John's. This water's gonna connect to the other direction. It's gonna tee in right below my property. It's gonna back up again and make it even worse than what we have going on there. Other concerns are schools. I have four kids that have, um, been part of Union County's school, school system. I have a wife who teaches in Union County. Uh, we have, have, we were part of rezoning multiple times. The reason my wife went back to teach, so we can keep kids in one schools while they, one school cluster while they're doing it. So just recently, we went from Sun Valley to Monroe, back to Sun Valley, and then I hear that middle schools a hundred percent capacity, high schools at ninety-seven percent capacity. I appreciate, appreciate your guys' questions about where do the other developments fit into this? I get down Old Monroe Road, there's condos, there's housing development going into there. And what I think I heard, those numbers aren't even figured into that number. So now we're gonna dump, put another, uh, a, a large amount of houses on, into that school system. It's not fair to the school board. It's not scared, it's not fair to the kids. It's not fair to the community. I would not have liked changing school systems every couple of years growing up. I can, and I am a big proponent of, of, um, public school systems. Like I tell you, my wife didn't have the advantage of our kids going to her cluster. My kids would be going to a private school right now. Just like my neighbors in joining property, they got their kids in private school right now. Couple things he brought up, uh, they brought up, they talk about the open areas and everything. If I understand correctly, the open areas are kind of bragging on the open areas being wetlands and sewer line. I understand this, the greenway coming, I guess you can't see what I'm pointing at. I guess you can see this, this green area here, we were talking about that being an open area. But to me, what I sees is, hey, we gave them a nice green area. Now we can, um, smash the houses in closer together and less curb and gutter that had to put in. The road studies, they, they put up as twelve, I think he put up as twelve thousand and fifteen thousand, um, trips a day, round trips a day, is that correct? That's a pretty high flow. They're talking about, uh, twenty twenty, there's gonna be some road modification. Why do we have to allow these developments come in and hope road modifications come along? Why don't we get, develop the roads, why don't we develop the sewers and everything, and then put the developments in the match? That's the only thing we're asking. The planning board meeting, we did not have anybody in attendance. I didn't find out till a couple of days before the planning board meeting. I was out of town personally. One of the other family members had a surgery that day, so we did not participate for that reason. We would've been there if we could've been there. I think that pretty much gets it for me. Uh, Mr. Ray, you were talking about biscuits. Did you say oatmeal? What are the three ingredients for biscuits?
Buttermilk.
Buttermilk?
Flour.
Flour?
Flour.
Flour, there we go. I like biscuits too. And our community's a big biscuit. If you turn around, you put too much flour in there, what's gonna happen? You put too much butter in there, what happens? So all we're asking you to do, let's develop this, get the right mixture and get our, and keep the community in mind. So.
Thank you, sir.
Any question?
Michael Helms?
Hi, everyone. Um, thank you for the time you're here. My name's Michael Helms. I'm living at forty-four sixteen Weddington Road. I live three houses down, um, from the cemetery, across the street from proposed development. I didn't get invited to the meetings. I got word of mouth, uh, with the community. Uh, wanted to thank the builders. They did meet with us twice there at Secrets Grove Baptist Church. They got a great presentation. Some of my biggest concerns is you're going down, you know, from the zoning down to R six. They're saying there's a lot of plus in there, but you're really dropping from forty thousand to six thousand, and that's just a huge amount of size that you're dropping with the amount of houses you're sticking in there. And where we spent most of our time talking with them is to cluster in the middle, uh, all the houses right there. I like what we had on the, uh, program tonight. I think it says twenty-five foot setback. So you got two twenty-five foot setbacks from both houses. Your house is almost the distance of this room here, just a little bit longer for the ones in this cluster. And that's where we kept having an argument with him. He said, you only had two houses, something per acre, and we was trying to get him to, you know, lay out where those were. If I was gonna buy in that development, there's some places that I would buy, and it would be the cul-de-sacs, because those are kind of nice pie. And you got nice, uh, no neighbors backing up to you against the natural area, super nice. I just moved back to Canillas. I grew up in Union County. Um, just two doors down from there, but, um, I lived in a development up there. I lived in a cul-de-sac that had the big pie. It had like three neighbors backed up to me. But I had nice, about, um, three quarters acres of lot, you know, where we built down in Canillas. And then the ponds, as he pointed out earlier, these are, I think they're, I've got the exact tone, um, but they're kind of dry retention ponds, I guess. Uh, the way they were explaining to us on the last meeting, uh, during the dry season, they would be mowed, but during the wet season, I'm not sure how they're gonna mow those this past year, how we have this, how this moisture we had in there. Um, I won't repeat the last, they did a great job on the roundabouts, the part that's being shut down and everything like that. The first meeting at Secrets Grove, there was a, uh, transportation gentleman from, uh, Union County up there. Uh, they did have a meeting on that. We threw up some questions about, um, development entrance closer to Monroe to line it up with Saint John's and do a roundabout. That does a couple of things that helps get them out in the highway, both sides to cut down on traffic or accidents. It also will slow down speed on eighty-four. Um, Union County Sheriff's Department does a great job sitting up in the churchyard. You'll see them sitting in churchyard all hours and night during the day, um, keeping people, you know, keeping the foot off the gas. They're just fifty-five through there. We're not saying slow it down, but, um, there's a couple of weeks ago, we had some guys on a motorcycle, guys standing out through the flashlight in the churchyard, flashing the guys that the roads are clear, so they could open their motorcycles wide open. There are some issues out there with the higher density, uh, living. We like to avoid, um, there's some things within the last year, I think, in the news. News always bring up bad stuff. There's a lot of good stuff out there, but we did have a house at, um, Saint John's, had bullets fired into it by a teenager. We had a, um, young kid doing, I think, a lemonade stand and was robbed with the things going on there. So there, there is some problems with their higher density, uh, housing. But again, the biggest thing we kept discussing with them is to clustering of the houses in the middle. Uh, you've got eight foot wide, so your house is only sixteen foot apart. The roads are not, they're by code. But if you ride through Saint John's during weekends, it'd be hard for a fire truck to get to your house quickly with, uh, the amount of traffic. That's the reason they kind of brought up the two-car garage. So they are trying to help out on some places, but with that volume of houses, it's hard to, uh, give you everything you need there. Uh, the traffic study, and I have been involved in a traffic study, but like you, uh, mentioned, up at Roundabout, there is RIA development and the ground's cleared. They're getting ready to start building houses. You have Meritage Homes just a little farther up from there on the other side of Westy Chapel. You have another, I think it's retirement building, uh, going on there. And then on Potter's Road, this builder also has a development that they bought from another developer that had shut down. They said they have another development going on there. And he's already pointed out the traffic there at Westy Chapel. You also have the traffic from Potter's Road to, um, Highway eighty-four. It backs up all the way there. You can make a right-hand turn during peak hours. And then you're backed up on Potter's Road all the way around the curve where it used to be a pond there. So you kind of bring up your waves app to figure out, okay, is it gonna be better to go down Barnhart or which way to go, you know, try to make your best way. So, uh, currently I am working in Davison, so I do a long commute. Um, I get on forty-five and have an hour commute, but we use that waves app trying to figure out. You got seventy-four, old Charlotte Highway getting ready to be widened. When that happens, I feel sure that's gonna dump more traffic on eighty-four and seventy-four to four lane when that's going on there. And then as earlier pointed out, you got the widening from, um, Weddington all the way up to Siler Church. That's gonna help promote people to use that road even more, being four lanes through there. And as you already touched about the high school, um, you do have, um, a new, um, what's it, Career Center High School, as you come into Monroe, also opening up on eighty-four. So most likely you'll have students, I'm not sure exactly how that's set up, but you probably have students coming in from Sun Valley, Cuperson, Weddington to use that. I don't think it's, I'm not sure if that's all exclusive. They'd be there all day, there during the day, or it'd be like, back in my days, when they had a Career Center, you start your morning out in a high school and then go to that high school where if you had a home high school, but maybe that's, we all home. But you do have that new high school that's already broken ground?
Charter school?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your time. I mean, I could repeat the same things you're just talking about, but the biggest concern we have is caused amount of houses is the traffic. As I mentioned, they had two people vote against it. Their two concerns were traffic also. Um, we're just really concerned eighty-four, you know, it's gonna get worse before it, you know? But anything we can do to help not make it just worse, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Jeff White Cotton.
Thank you for your time, uh, I'm Jeff White Cotton, I'm the pastor of Secrets Grove Baptist Church, which is the church right beside where the development's gonna be. And I've been there a little over eleven years now, um, and, uh, my only concern with, with the development is, is again, the traffic. Because in the eleven years I've been there, I have seen personally the amount of traffic that has increased just, you know, tremendously in the last eleven years. And, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, no matter what happens, that, you know, I, I know there's, there's, there's a projection for a four lane highway, but, but my concern is that something is gonna be done with Weddington Road. Because a- as they've already said, there's just so much traffic. In fact, a few months ago, on a Wednesday night, uh, two of my church members who were coming to Bible study actually got rear-ended, uh, as they were getting ready to turn in just because of all the traffic. And so I just wanna make sure because, uh, with Saint John's and you've got this development, then the other development, I think it's Weddington, or Weddington Point, i- it's just gonna be, y- you know, that two-lane road is just not gonna handle all the traffic. And, and, you know, as a pastor, you know, no matter what goes in, you know, our church is gonna reach out to all these communities. We've been, you know, reaching out to Saint John's and we're gonna do, you know, whatever. But I also have a concern for my, my people as well as their, I have a lot of elderly people, uh, you know, when they're coming out of church, you know, I just wanna make sure they're gonna be safe trying to get out of church or into church. As I said, you know, I had, you know, just a few months ago, two of my church members did get rear-ended and, uh, you know, just trying to get to Bible study. And so I just wanna make sure that, you know, that, that you're, that y'all realize how bad the traffic situation is on Weddington Road. Because it is, uh, something desperately needs to be done, especially if there's gonna be more housing and more developments. Because right now, Weddington Road just can't handle what we have right now. And if there's gonna be a projection in the future, I, I just want you guys to understand that something desperately needs to be done on that road. And just one more thing real quickly, Rodney forgot to ask this question, so he asked me to ask this, uh, so this is coming from Rodney. Um, the question is, what is the advantage to Union County to change zoning? And the only benefit is for the developer. And so I just, uh, thank you for your time, but again, my concern is about the traffic. And I just hope that you guys would at least, as they said, come check out Weddington Road. Because there is a mess out there and it's gonna get worse unless something is done to that road. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. David Nelson. Okay, all right. Lee, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing on the Dixon Farm. Next, item number eight, opportunity for hearing by complainant regarding request for refund of excise tax paid in the Register of Deeds office. It's an opportunity for a hearing by Harry Marsh Law to comment regarding a request for a refund of an overpayment of excise tax paid to the Register of Deeds office. Is anyone present who wishes to comment from Harry Marsh Law? And the consideration is, is that this item is item number thirteen under consent agenda. No one present from law? Then we'll, no one here to, for that request, we'll move on to the next item of informal comments. We have no, no one signed up for informal comments. Next is addition, deletion, and adoption of the agenda. I'd like to add an item number thirty, which is, uh, the addition of a flagpole at the DHS Center. Any other additions, deletions?
Motion to approve is amended.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, then next we have our consent agenda.
Motion to approve is amended.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have, next item is old business, we have no old business this evening. Next is the Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant for Tyson Foods, Project Max, in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-seven thousand over a five-year period. Ron, you have anything else you'd like to?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant. Awarded Tyson Foods, Project Max, in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-seven thousand over a five-year period, beginning FY twenty-twenty-two. Authorized County Manager to approve an incentive grant agreement with the company pending legal review.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next we have item number twenty-four. And bear with me, I have to read this resolution. I hereby introduce to you the following bond orders. Bond order authorization authorizing the issuance of not to exceed eighteen million seven hundred thousand general obligation refund bonds of the County of Union, North Carolina. Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed seventeen million five hundred and fifty-five thousand general obligation industrial park bonds of the County of Union, County, North Carolina. Next, we have bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed four million five hundred and thirty-five thousand general obligation public building bonds of the County of Union, County, North Carolina. Next, we have a bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed five hundred thousand general obligation law enforcement bonds of the Union, of Union County, North Carolina. And a bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed three million ten thousand general obligation sewer bonds of the County of Union County, North Carolina. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next we have, uh, item twenty-five, and I think Bjorn, you're ready already, and this is the com- comprehensive transportation plan amendments.
Evening Chairman Helms, member of the board, Mr. Watson. I'm here to present a series of comprehensive transportation plan amendments that would be requested of the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. In the rezonings you just saw, on each of the transportation maps, you saw the different colored lines where they talked about two-lane roads and multi-lane roads. None of those reflected funded projects, they are our plan that allow us to, um, make recommendations to the NCDOT and of developers regarding the cross-section that we have collectively agreed upon as what's needed for the community. Uh, that involves not only existing roads, but proposed new roads. And where they cross over undeveloped land or developed land, that affects the property owners. And sometimes it's a necessary thing and we acknowledge it and we try and get the project implemented. But in some instances, the project can't be developed or is no longer supported. And so it would be the appropriate thing to do to remove it from the plan or reroute it to a, a better alignment to, uh, reduce that impact on the property owners. So what I'm about to show to you reflects, uh, coordination with municipalities throughout the county, uh, as well as with CARTPO staff. This would be, uh, an action to request of CARTPO to open a public comment period that we would administer starting, uh, later this month after the CARTPO board meeting and run for thirty days. We would have two community input meetings, uh, in Indian Trail and in Weddington, as well as online presence to, uh, receive input from the community. We would respond to those comments and then take it back to the board, to you, to reaffirm the, uh, list of amendments. And then take it to CARTPO, who would be the approving body to actually approve them with a concurrent, uh, dual approval by the NCDOT Board of Transportation. At that point, the map gets updated and then the new routes are put on. So, uh, these alignments, this first one is Marvin School in Marvin. This is where two roundabouts were recently constructed because this dashed gray line, uh, actually crosses over Village of Marvin property for their future Village Hall. And so they didn't want that to be, uh, purchased by the DOT, so the DOT instead built those two roundabouts. So the right thing to do would be to reroute the road on the existing Marvin School. Brooms Old Mill, this is, uh, just east of there, um, Newtown Road is up here, uh, Cutherson School Cluster is down here. And this road was shown from years ago as an extension to connect down to, uh, Bonds Grove Church and, and those roads to extend through this area and to provide greater connectivity in the area. The problem is, these two subdivisions have closed this corridor, so you would have to purchase people's backyards in order to get that road to connect through. And then when we reference this down here, um, in a subsequent slide, you'll see that it's really difficult to make happen. So the recommendation for here would be to remove this segment. Bonds Grove Church Extension, this dashed line would take Bonds Grove Church to the east and then connect in with the, um, Brooms Old Mill. But if you look at this, you have a whole subdivision in the way, as well as a significant flood plain. And that's just not gonna happen. And the flood plain extends all the way over towards Providence Road. So it, it doesn't provide the, the connectivity that, uh, was intended. And so the recommendation would be to remove this segment from the CTP. Howie Mine Church Extension, that'd, that'd be where that would continue on, um, connecting into a residential area and again, crossing a significant flood plain. So, um, that would be a very difficult development to occur. You have, um, low-density development here, higher density there. So to go either way out of the flood plain, you could talk about impacts on neighborhoods. So, uh, this segment was deemed to be not feasible anymore. Twelve Mile Creek Extension, current extension, um, showed this in front of, uh, Don Ogram, uh, planning for the school district. And he was, got wide-eyed when I showed how this crossed over Cutherson School Cluster. He said, well, that's probably not feasible to have happen in addition to crossing this large flood plain. We should shift it further to the east because having a connection, because this is an awful intersection. So having additional, uh, distribution of traffic between Newtown and, and, uh, Cutherson area is important. So this is actually a shift to the east. Amanda Drive Extension, this is in Weddington. Um, Town of Weddington's already had a good amount of connectivity through existing developments and, um, they don't have the ability to make this connection back to the east. So this segment would be deleted. And then to the east, Walden Lane, um, this dashed gray line with some of the existing segment that's already been built. It's a map error, don't know why it's like this, but it's about two or three hundred yards, um, north of where it should be. So this realignment is put in to really reflect where it should've been all along. Chestnut Parkway Extension to the southwest, this is Independence Boulevard to the southwest, this is a funded project, joint venture between Town of Indian Trail and NCDOT. That's a funded project, designed, it will be built in the near future. This segment extending further to the east through an industrial park, obviously has impacts through the industrial park. You'd have to, you'd have to purchase some pretty expensive commercial industrial property. Also, we have a proposed hotel site going in here in unincorporated Union County. They, we've, we've made them aware of this, they don't wanna build it, we can't make them build it. And also, you've had the super street going in on US seventy-four, and that change in the corridor means that getting convenient travel across through this road, it's really broken. So there's not a lot of value to having this connection on anymore. So between the town and the county, it's recommended to remove it. Stinson Hardest Extension, this is something, again, crossing a flood plain, uh, crossing some private property, um, already developed. So there'd be some impacts through there, and then connecting back to the east. Um, this is largely in the Town of Indian Trail, they don't support having this connection on there anymore. Faith Church Extension, similar situation, crossing over residential development, large flood plain connecting back in. And, uh, again, and this is Bonterra to put it in context, and the Monroe Expressway is right here. So again, uh, between the red, the human environment and then, and the, um, natural environment, the impacts were seen as, uh, too large compared to the, the benefit of the project. Airport Road Realignment, you saw this in the recent rezonings. This actually is an approved development right here. Weddington Point does not include this alignment in as a part of its, uh, development, so therefore, this isn't going to happen. Uh, the recommendation is to shift it onto the existing airport road where the roundabout is. Poplin Road Realignment, this was, this already exists, this is a two thousand nineteen area, or two thousand eighteen aerial showing the construction of the Monroe Expressway. This already is open, so this is just correcting it, putting onto the newly opened road. Old Williams Road, which is a next agenda item, uh, for the board regarding the splitting of this road, uh, due to the Monroe Expressway. This no longer serves a comprehensive transportation plan function, they're two dead-end roads. So the recommendation is to, uh, remove this segment. And so happy to go back to any of the slides and answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, the request of you is to, uh, formally request, uh, thirty-day public comment period from the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization.
Okay, any questions?
I have one question, I have no problem with your recommendations. But who in the world put all those proposed roads through all those wet planes?
Well, there was a mindset that has been changed in the last probably five years regarding the purpose of the comprehensive transportation plan. It was meant to be a wish list in that there wasn't as much consideration of the property owners and there was more power assumed by the NCDOT to protect right-of-way. And there could've been more potential of crossing these flood plains, but the regulations have gotten tighter. The protection of private property by the courts has gotten stronger and the cost to build these projects has gotten, um, higher. And so therefore, in, in the previous generation of doing these plans, it made sense to have them on there because there wasn't as much of a harm. Now with the, especially with the Waxahaw Parkway over the last couple of years, property owners are very much aware of these and the real estate community is aware that they're supposed to disclose these when people are buying and selling a property. So therefore, we shouldn't be so, um, aggressive in identifying corridors that can't be, um, implemented realistically in the near future. And so this is, this really reflects a new mindset regarding those considerations.
This doesn't change any funding, right?
So it doesn't have anything to do, it doesn't have anything to do with funding, it just creates a different, a smaller universe of projects we can consider in the future.
Mr. Russian, we oughta get some money out of them for going away with all these other roads.
Well, there's no money with these anyway, so zero from zero is still zero.
All right, what it does eliminate some things like we had in Waxahaw Parkway, uh, with residents purchasing property not aware there was a planned route. Uh, I'll make a motion to authorize staff to request a public comment period from Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, CARTPO, to solicit, solicit public comment on a series of thirteen comprehensive transportation plan amendments in Union County. Any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think Bjorn, you got the next one too?
I do. This next one came up, uh, over the past week regarding Monroe Expressway navigation issue. Something we've been aware of at the staff level, you've been aware of, Commissioner Helms as well, regarding the fact that over thirty roads were either created or modified throughout Union County as it relates to the Monroe Expressway. And because of a lack of communication to the, the powers that be regarding these various navigation systems, the residents of Garden Bridge or Lane, which used to be Old Williams Road, have experienced this on a weekly basis with eighteen-wheelers getting routed through their road because it used to connect to US seventy-four and Wingate, and the trucks have to back up. And every once in a while, they get stuck. And last week, this gentleman from Greensboro was stuck for over seven hours. And the residents along that corridor got to know him pretty well for helping them with the road naming process, gave me a call and they said, guess what's happening today? And they sent pictures, said, holy cow, so. Um, went out there, um, spoke with them, spoke with the, with the, uh, driver for the recovery vehicle, as well as the driver of the truck. They were there for, what's that add up to, seven hours? And, uh, estimated cost of eight hundred dollars to have the wrecker come and, and pull the truck out. The resident said this happens on a weekly basis, early on, there was an ambulance as well, uh, when the road was split approximately a year ago. Early on, there was an ambulance as well, when the road was split approximately a year ago. These screen captures are from the last week. This is from Union County's GIS system, which is what's used for our nine-one-one system as well. It shows Garden Bridge Lane, which is the current name of the road. Santana Road is what was renamed here. So from our perspective, we did our part. We updated our road network database, and we communicated it to the NCDOT. If you go to what we use, Esri, which is our GIS software, their base level, base map information shows Old Williams Road still crossing over. No change. Go to the NCDOT's map showing their network, it shows Old Williams Road with no change. It also doesn't show the Monroe Expressway. You go to Google, it does show the split, but then it shows the old names. Now, it's my understanding that there are commercial-grade navigation systems specifically for truckers as well. So some people would say, "Well, those truckers were, I don't know what they were doing, but they knew this road was closed." But both of them were actually routed incorrectly. The driver of the eighteen-wheeler got stuck, and then the recovery vehicle, which came from Charlotte, actually was routed Old Williams to come up this way and stop there and had to turn around and reroute all the way back around to get to the other side of the Monroe Expressway. So clearly, the navigation systems for them aren't working. We have communicated this issue to the NCDOT multiple times over the last year. We've communicated with the Charlotte Chamber of Commerce, or I mean, sorry, the Monroe Union County Chamber of Commerce. We've communicated with business owners. We've given them the Board of Transportation and the Turnpike Authority Board members' email addresses to communicate this issue. We've been told by the NCDOT that they've done what they're supposed to do, but we don't believe that's the case. And we aren't able to update Google's network. We've been told that Google updates its networks by periodically downloading the network files from cities, counties, states, or whoever owns road networks. And so in instances like this, they would have to get it from the NCDOT. The NCDOT's position is, these roads have not yet been changed and don't need to be updated in their network because the Monroe Expressway is still an active project. There's still some various punch list items that have to be done. Our contention, or our counter to that is, well, you guys got the Monroe Expressway added to Google within weeks of it opening to the public, yet for a year, you haven't done the same thing on behalf of these other changes to your road network. And so we've written up a resolution highlighting these issues, explaining that we've done our part of this situation, and that we're essentially elevating the issue and asking for it to be resolved.
We've been talking for this for some time. Is any questions, discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Bjorn. Next item is a resolution to revise the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting schedule. Michelle, will if you will help us with that, please?
This item is an item that we bring in before the board to make a change in our regular meeting schedule, your regular meeting schedule. Since February of nineteen ninety-one, the Union County Board of Commissioners has conducted your regular meetings twice monthly on the first and third Mondays at seven PM. Before that, for some time, there were regular meetings held as early as nine AM and also for a time at three-thirty PM in the afternoon. The purpose of moving both meetings to the evening was to enable better opportunity for the public to view or participate in meetings. Since that time, the county has developed multiple means of providing viewership of board meetings. This includes live streaming on the Union County website and on YouTube. We also have delayed broadcasts via public access channel at two AM, nine AM, and seven PM. And there are video recordings of the meetings that are available on the county's website shortly after the meetings occur. Staff took an informal survey of the thirty largest counties in North Carolina and indicated that only four other counties hold meetings as late as seven o'clock PM. Among those thirty counties, fourteen hold one or more meetings in the morning or afternoon, and no county adjacent to Union County holds meetings as late as seven PM. For these reasons, and after discussions with board members, a resolution was put together that is included in your agenda materials. Meetings would remain on the first and third Mondays of each month, except when falling on a holiday observed by the county. And in those cases, the meeting would be held the next business day. However, meeting times would be adjusted such that the first meeting of the month would be held at six PM, and the second meeting would be held at three o'clock PM. Adoption of this resolution would also delete from the meeting schedule the first meeting of July, which would have been held on July first, twenty nineteen, which is typical, a typical board's practice to cancel that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is any questions or discussion? Commissioner Russian?
Does it go with confusion having two different meeting times?
I think in the assessment that staff did, that is not uncommon to have two different meeting times, one earlier and one later. We work to accommodate the rezoning schedule so that we'll have that six o'clock meeting when we will schedule our rezonings for that six o'clock meeting of the month so that folks are able to get here after work hours.
I'm mindful that it's almost nine fifteen. But do any of our employees or the, have to come to our meetings, have to pick up their kids at school or arrange for anything like that? Is that an issue? That would be an issue, right?
I'll speak for myself. I have children I have to pick up, and I would make other arrangements on those days.
I do think it might be a little confusing with three different times.
Any further questions or comments?
Should, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, should this pass? Would that affect this month?
It would start in July. So your only meeting in July, which would be, Lynn, give me the date. July the fifteenth. And we will work with our communications staff to publicize this widely so that folks know when the schedule is.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt the resolution to revise the regular meeting schedule of the Union County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the appointment to the Town of Marshall's Planning Board of applicants residing within the Town of Marshall Extraterritorial Jurisdiction ETJ. In accordance with GS one-six-oh-eight dash three-six-two, the Union County Board of Commissioners is the appointing authority for the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction area of Marshall for two representatives of the Marshall Planning Board and two representatives for the Marshall Board of Adjustments representing the Marshall's ETJ area. Those appointees must reside within the ETJ. On March fourth, two thousand and nineteen, Marshall Council adopted a resolution requesting the Union County Board of Commissioners to appoint two representatives from the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction area to the Marshall Planning Board. These appointments have been advertised for several weeks in accordance with the process that the county follows for advertising appointments to the boards and/or committees. An application has been received from Tom Appenzeller. The county's GIS Division has confirmed that Mr. Appenzeller resides within the ETJ area. No other applicants have been received for this appoint. I make a motion that we consider appointment to Marshall Planning Board in accordance with NCGS one-sixty-eight dash three-six-two of applicant residing within Marshall ETJ area. And we appoint Mr. Appenzeller. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is item thirty. And sometimes we're soaking. Did I miss twenty-nine? Oh, thank you. Michelle, appointment to the Human Services Agency Board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to consider the appointment of Unkit Desai to the Human Services Agency Board to fill the designated seat for a professional pharmacist. The Human Services Agency Board voted unanimously to make this recommendation at its May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, meeting.
Okay, have motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll do thirty. And thirty is an item that sometimes we, in a busy time, we're so close, we don't see things. So it's been observed and brought to our attention that we do not have a flag that flies at the DHS building. And Mr. Watson has done some research, and this is an item to make a motion that we install the flags that represent our nation there.
Mr. Chairman, we did look into, I had staff look into the cost of installing flagpoles at the Human Services Building. All-in cost for three flagpoles, one twenty-five-foot and two twenty-foot flagpoles is four thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. That includes the poles, the flags, and the concrete to put them in place.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great, okay, next, Mr. Watson, is your comments, please?
Hi, this evening, I would like to offer condolences to Deputy Clerk, Ms. Hughes, at the passing of her mother. That funeral was this afternoon. And congratulations are in, are due. Union County retiree Jerome Sutton. Jerome worked for Union County, retired from the Fire Marshal's Office, and upon retiring, took a part-time job with the Union County School System as a crossing guard at Sun Valley Middle School. If you've ever been by Sun Valley Middle School, you have seen Jerome. I passed there recently and saw Jerome in action, and he cares deeply for the students' safety. And the way he communicates with people as they pass is really something to see. I think that the most shocking thing that I've ever seen as I passed Sun Valley Middle School one day was a giant pumpkin about Halloween time out in the middle of the road, and it was Jerome. But he was directing traffic. Jerome was recently recognized as a North Carolina school hero by the North Carolina Education Lottery. And the lottery provided him with a ten thousand dollar award, and they also provided Sun Valley Middle School with a ten thousand dollar award. There were sixty-seven hundred and fifty nominations, and only ten winners across the state of North Carolina were picked. Congratulations, Jerome.
Commissioner Wright?
I have never seen a more somber-looking group of county employees. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Simpson?
No comment.
Commissioner Russian? Commissioner Agnes?
Thank you for your applause for me. Keeping you so light, I wish everyone good evening.
The only thing I want to say is I had the privilege of attending the dedication of the Union County Communities Shelter. Michelle and I and her husband were there, and they gave us a plaque because of our contribution, financial contribution, to help make this come together. It's got in excess of ninety beds that will help serve our community and our people in need. And so I just wanted to, I'll pass this on to the manager and let him find an appropriate place to put it. But it's exciting to have that come to fruition in Union County. And with that, I'll ask a motion to adjourn. Okay, all in favor?